Jacob, Jacob, you'll dim the lights, right? Once, once my presentation's. I have to put my calls. Do I have to put my calls?
No way.
Because it's the. I will do it. I don't mind doing it.
Good evening, everyone. It's seven thirty. I'd like to call to order the Old Bridge Township Planning Board meeting for June twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Daniel, can we have roll call, please?
Mr. De Palma?
Here.
Mr. Lenning?
Here.
Mr. Agopian?
Here.
Ms. Cannon? Mr. Rena is absent. Mr. Petty?
Here.
Ms. Missella?
Here.
Mr. McGyserick?
Here.
Mr. Brennan?
Here.
Mr. Ferrara is absent. And Chairman Lowry?
Here.
Swearing of the officers?
Yes, before we start the public hearings, can I swear in the professionals for the board? Would you please raise your right hand? Do you both swear and affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, first, on the agenda is a public hearing, fourth round Housing Element Fair Share Housing Plan. Vina?
Just for the, for the public hearing on this particular item, I'm going to swear in our township planner just once again. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
And for the record, could you please state your name and identify yourself?
Sure. I'm Vina Savin. I've been the township planner for the last eight years now. I've been practicing planning for the last twenty years. I have a bachelor's in architecture, a double masters in planning and policymaking from NYU. And I have testified before this board multiple times.
You're accepted.
Thank you. Thank you. Right. I see that there are a lot of new board members, so I'm just going to give you an overview of what goes on with the affordable housing, right? So it, it's, it dates back to nineteen seventy-six with the Mount Laurel decision, where in every municipality had an affordable housing obligation to address. There was the first round, there was a second round, and then there was a third round. And there was the Council on Affordable Housing that was established that monitored the whole process until the third round. Every time there were regulations established on how a municipality creates affordable housing. Around third round, when COA, which is the Council on Affordable Housing, came up with new regs, they were kind of unsuccessful. And municipalities were guided to follow the second round rules. Old Bridge Township addressed or complied with our first round obligation. Old Bridge Township complied with our second round obligation. The third round obligation also, the housing plan was finally approved in twenty seventeen. That was the third round. Now we are commencing the fourth round. And in this period since the Council on Affordable Housing has been abolished, the governor Murphy, last year, March twenty-eight, twenty twenty-four, established new regulations to come up with affordable housing obligations for every municipalities. And it was mainly to streamline the process to create these affordable housing obligations or affordable housing units. In October of twenty twenty-four, the Department of Community Affairs did an analysis based on the law and came up with numbers for each municipality within New Jersey. Old Bridge was assigned a present need, which is our rehabilitation share of three hundred and eighteen units. Our prospective need, which is what Old Bridge is supposed to build in the next ten years, because this round starts from twenty twenty-five to twenty thirty-five. Within these ten years, Old Bridge has an obligation of six hundred and eighty-five units. And those six eighty, the, the number six eighty-five was challenged by us because we know that these numbers, when DCA established these numbers, what they did is they looked at the aerial imagery. Anywhere they saw vacant land, they assigned a number to it. We have a lot of vacant land. Old Bridge has a lot of vacant land, but most of the land is constrained. We have significant environmental constraints like wetlands, transition areas, streams, flood hazard areas. And those areas are really not developable. But when this number was established, we were given the time till January thirtieth to respond and evaluate their analysis. For almost one month, I was analyzing their data. One of the biggest flaw of that data was they looked at tracks. They don't look at parcels. So one tract could actually have three parcels. Some of the parcels could be under same ownership. Some of them would be completely separate from ownership standards, but there would be constraints. So although it looks like a large chunk of land, it is constrained and it cannot be developed. So Jan thirtieth, I submitted a report challenging the six eighty-five. And at that time, looking at the tract data, I came up with a number of three hundred and thirty-three. There were a lot of mediation meetings held to fight back, present a case with Fair Housing Center. And I'm trying to explain this in the most simplest way. Joe can actually use the technical words, but I know most of you are not familiar with affordable housing, so I just want to give you a background. But there were a lot of mediations. Unfortunately, Judge Jacobson came with a ruling that our final adjusted number is the one that Fair Share Housing Center came up with, and that's six seventy-three. So from six eighty-five, we only brought it down to six seventy-three. And now it is upon us to come up with a housing plan to address that obligation of six seventy-three. When I say our number is six seventy-three, the way it works is if there are ten units on a property, if a property can accommodate or be developed with ten units, twenty percent of that has to be affordable. If it is for sale, if it is a rental development, then fifteen percent of it is supposed to be affordable. So imagine when you have an obligation of six hundred and seventy-three, times five is actually what you're building in the town. So which means the actual development that occurs on it throughout Old Bridge would be almost three thousand five hundred new units for the next ten years. So luckily, the Fair Housing Act allow, allows municipalities that want to challenge or feel that they don't have that much land to conduct a vacant land analysis. And that vacant land analysis is more accurate because it's based on the MOD four data, so it goes by parcel by parcel. You can actually jump to the second slide. I'm just going with the flow, but you can skip this too. All right, stay here. So I used the most, so it was a huge task because Old Bridge is huge. And we have X amount of properties that need to be analyzed. Each parcel has to be analyzed. So with the MOD four data, you look at class one, which is vacant and privately owned parcels. In Old Bridge, we have nine hundred and seventy-three such parcels. Then you look at class fifteen C, which is vacant publicly owned parcels, that we have, Old Bridge has seven hundred such parcels. Now each of these parcels, so I'm talking about almost seventeen hundred parcels that had to be evaluated for its development potential. I went through each parcel to see what is really developable. And you have received a copy of the housing plan. All the data is in that housing plan. I'm trying to sum it, sum it up for you so that it's easy, but each and every property was reviewed. Now, in, in terms of class one, any open space that is affiliated with cluster zoning or older developments, it's preserved. There is a conservation easement on it. You cannot build on that parcel. So that property was eliminated. In some cases, there is a surface parking lot on the property which is used by an adjacent commercial use. That is not developable because if we develop on that parcel, the commercial property has no parking, right? Then there are a parcels that are owned by OBMUA, our Municipal Utility Authority. We need them for our utilities for future. There are some parcels that are owned by Servile. There are few parcels that are owned by Port Amboy. Don't ask me why we have properties for Port Amboy, but the water for Port Amboy goes from Old Bridge. The parcels are within Old Bridge. So all these parcels were eliminated. And what remains on the private side is only forty properties. So out of the nine hundred and seventy-three parcels, only forty of the properties are truly developable and not the entire parcel. So in that too, among those forty parcels, there are constraints. So a property could be ten acres, but only two or three acres of that parcel is developable. So when you come up with a realistic development potential, and I want to take a step back. The whole purpose of doing a vacant land analysis is to come up with a realistic development potential for the town. So if somebody else is saying that you can absorb in three thousand five hundred units, we as the town analyze it better and come up with what is the true, what is the realistic development potential within the town? So class one, we had forty parcels. Again, class fifteen C, township owned parcels, we have seven hundred such parcels. The township owned parcels, it's a little more easier because we have an active, we have been actively participating in the Green Acres Program, where we have the Recreation Open Space Inventory, which is called Rossi. So those parcels that are either funded or unfunded under the Green Acres Program are on the Rossi list. All of them are preserved or those cannot be developed. So with fifteen, class fifteen C, although we have seven hundred parcels, only two of those parcels are really developable. There were some parcels which are significantly constrained, especially where Crossroads area is or where Lawrence Harbor is. We have some parcel, but they have significant constraints, cannot be developed. So all those were eliminated. Next slide. Is there a way to zoom in, actually? Stay there. So these. This table here, this table here, right, it lists all forty parcels that are privately owned, that are vacant. You have the acreage in the second column, sorry, this, this column, that is the fifth column. Next to it is net developable acreage. So what I did is we have an extensive GIS database. The wetlands or the constraints that we, we get the layers from DEP. I superimpose it on our parcel layer to see what really is development, is developable. The numbers are not hundred percent accurate, but they are close enough. So then you have the net developable acre. And then based on the affordable housing regulations, if a property is more than five acres, a density of eight units per acre is applied. If the developable, net developable portion is less than five acres, then, then the density of six units per acre is applied. So here's a list of all forty parcels, and here's what can be the obligation that, that is Old Bridge's share. The next one is the public properties. There are only two parcels on East Greystone Road. Both of them are developable, and they can come up with seventeen affordable units. The parcel on East Greystone Road, right next to Roosevelt Center, is the larger parcel. It's almost thirty acres. However, only ten acres of it is developable. We had evaluated the site in the past for other users as well, so that is included. Now, once you analyze the class one and class fifteen C properties, the next step is also to look at properties that are underutilized within the township. So you go by the aerial and you have to see, I know in the past, there have been pre-application meetings on certain properties. So I know they are ripe for development and the owner is interested in selling. There were a couple of developers that reached out to us. So I analyzed their properties as well as what I came up with, and only five of these properties made it into the housing plan. And after the entire vacant land analysis was completed, based on the applied densities, Old Bridge's realistic development potential is just three hundred and twelve units. The six hundred and seventy-three that was assigned by the court doesn't really go away. So our, the three hundred and twelve, which I came up with, is our realistic development potential. But what remains, so six hundred and seventy-three minus three hundred and twelve, whatever remains becomes your unmet need. And you don't just escape that. You have to come up with a plan to address your unmet need. And this plan has come up with a mechanism to address the three hundred and twelve based on the vacant land as well as some of the projects that were approved by the planning board, some of the projects that were approved by the zoning board, the under, five underutilized parcels. And then we have a plan in place to meet the unmet need. Can you move to the next slide? So this table is our compliance plan. And I'm just going to re-reference to my table because it's very hard to see. Can you zoom in? Thank you. All right, I think this is ease. Go back. Can you zoom in a little bit more, just focusing on the table so that I can give a rundown? Okay, thanks. Thanks. So here you have your obligation, prospective need three hundred and twelve, rehabilitation three hundred and eighteen. Council has passed a resolution that we will make sure that we will address the three hundred and eighteen because we have an affirmative affordable housing program in place that we use to address this present need. Historically, in the last ten years, we have rehabilitated almost five to, five to six units every year with a rate of an average of twenty thousand dollars. But in twenty twenty, when we all experienced the pandemic, there were a lot of people doing home improvements. That was the only year which was an anomaly, but that was a year when we rehabilitated ten units. So when you average out over a period of ten years, there were like seven to eight units that were rehabilitated. And we have enough funds in our Affordable Housing Trust Fund to take care of those units, should the same rate be applied for the next ten years. So council passed a resolution to accept the three eighteen. Now the question is with three hundred and twelve units, we have vacant land analysis, which came up with two hundred and fifty-six based on the privately, sorry, two thirty-nine, based on the privately owned vacant parcels, seventeen based on the publicly vacant land, and we have a total of two hundred and fifty-six credits. So for every affordable unit, you get one credit. So we have two hundred and fifty-six units there. Now, among the inclusionary housing, I'll skip underutilized because that, I want to talk in the end. Those are those five parcels I explained before. But Poor Farm Road, there was a project that was approved on Poor Farm Road for duplexes for thirty-five units, of which seven units are affordable. We get seven credits for it. Oak Tree Plaza, this is again a zoning board application that was approved four years ago. We have family rental units, five, we get five credits for it. Then among age restricted inclusionary housing, we have Vision Old Bridge Three, which is one oh five Old Matavon Road. It's a beautiful building that, that is under construction right now on Old Matavon Road. There are four age restricted units in there. There are six Medicaid units in there for a total of ten. We get ten credits for that project. Then we have Vision Old Bridge Four, which is on the agenda tonight, and you'll hear more. If that gets approved, which is a collaboration between, between public and private, we will earn fourteen credits for that program, for that development. Geik Park Residency, an approved project on five sixteen. We have another five units. From there, we get credits for it. Also, on the right, what you see is rental bonus credits. So previously, in the last rounds, there were more rental bonus credits that were offered to the township. So if there were rental projects, you could get more credits. This fourth round regulations have changed. So based on our need or the realistic development potential of three hundred and twelve, we are eligible for seventy-eight rental bonus credits. We haven't reached that cap yet because the way the crediting program works is you get one bonus credit. If it's a special needs housing, you get one bonus, so one credit for one unit you produce, a rental bonus credit. For if it's a municipally sponsored project, then if it is a market rate unit that was converted to affordable unit, then you get one-on-one credit. You get half a credit if the property is in transit village. It's a transit village designation. If there was, there are a couple of restrictions also, age restricted units, since we have a couple of age restricted housing units. We used to get more rental bonus credits on age restricted, but now it's only capped to ten percent. So out of your seventy-eight, you could only have eight units. It's capped. So we have that ten percent. And then also, we have to produce very low income housing units. If you produce, and the law is that you have to have a minimum thirteen percent, but if you produce fourteen or fifteen percent, which is very difficult to get, those, those additional units get a rental bonus credit also. So based on all these regulations, this compliance plan was prepared, wherein the township has three hundred and seventy-five credits accumulated. So our obligation based on realistic development potential is three hundred and twelve. We have credits worth three hundred and seventy-five. There were five sites that are underutilized and have been included, and I had to come up with a development potential based on the net developable area. So there's a property on Texas Road, which has reached out to us multiple times in the past. It is in a residential zone, and that property has been included. Foxborough Drive, I know you guys are familiar with the RD management property, but there is a property on the other side of a Foxborough which is vacant. That parcel was included in this underutilized wrist. There is a property that comprises of three parcels on Spring Valley Road, and it's a huge piece of land. It has some constraints, but it is developable. So this property is right next to Plaza Grande. There have been multiple proposals in the past, active adult communities, warehousing, flex space, multiple uses, and nothing has come to fruition, but I know that that property is again ripe for development, so that has been included. There is a property on Ferry Road, close to the hospital. It's a huge piece of property. It has constraints, but again, has a potential. It has constraints, but again, has a potential to be developed. That has been included. And then three nine six three CR five sixteen, it's ac, it's actually a pending application in front of the zoning board. It's for um apartments on five sixteen. Um, it has not been uh fully heard, no um uh, there has been no action on it yet, but that is um has a potential to be developed with multifamily, so that property has been included. There was one home that Habitat for Humanity developed o, in the last three years on Norwood Avenue. We get credits for that, and that has been included as well. Next slide. So municipal land use law uh has a criteria for site evaluation. Uh, you look at sites that are clear for title before you come up with affordable housing obligations. You see that they are within the sewer service area. You also look for compatible land uses, and then you have to see if the site could be developed with RSI standards. So each and every site that you heard tonight from me has been evaluated based on these standards. And in the housing plan, for each site, there's an information sheet. It gives you details as to what the net developable area is, the, whether it's within the sewer service area or not. For example, the property on East Greystone Road, which is owned by the township, it's currently not within the sewer service area, but we are working on the crossroads plan, the plan that was uh adopted, the redevelopment plan that was amended by the council a couple of months ago. There's a portion that is also not within the sewer service area. We are working to include that parcel as well as this township-owned parcel to have it within the sewer service area, so it just made sense to include it in our realistic development potential. But you will see in the housing plan, a site evaluation sheet for each of this project. Next slide. Um, this is the list of underutilized parcels. To help you, I have put in aerials and show constraints on the properties to see how they are development, uh, developable. It's just for your reference, but all this material is included in the housing plan. Next slide. Now, the most important, unmet need. We have come up with three areas where we think that we could address our unmet need, and I just want to explain how the unmet need works. Unmet need is not something that really goes away. So you have your s, three, three hundred and twelve obligation. The remainder from the six seventy-three is your unmet need. If in the next six months or a year or two, an ordinance is written and we grant approvals in the planning board, that gets added to your RDP, the realistic development potential. So then your realistic development potential actually increases from, from three hundred and twelve to a higher number, and your unmet need reduces. These three areas are areas that um we have been, we meaning the township attorney and myself, have been focusing on for almost a year. It's a long process, but I am pretty optimistic that uh they will be developed at some point. I'm gonna start with my most favorite because it's my baby. I started it from inception, and I started it almost um six years ago bef, even before COVID started, and that's the Transit, Transit Village. Um, the Transit Village site is actually right here. And this site, to give you an idea, is right behind the Home Depot, the Walmart, the Gateway Shopping Center. And what Transit Village does is, if you have high ridership on a train line or a bus line, then you are eligible to apply for a Transit Village designation, which comes from New Jersey Department of Transportation. When I took over Old Bridge and I saw this uh, the commuter bus line, I was absolutely thrilled because I think at that time when I started, I was the first planner to even start a redevelopment project based on a bus uh terminus. At that time, I reached out to NJ DOT, NJ Transit, because there are some parcels, parking lots, that are owned by NJ Transit. And we had a pre-application meeting when I made a presentation. The who's who was there, like NJ DOT, NJ Transit, DCA. Everybody was there, and they were quite thrilled that we are pursuing the Transit Village based on bus ridership. Unfortunately, East Brunswick, Lindhurst beat me, uh, and uh it was only because of COVID because we had the pre-application meeting and the next month we were hit with COVID and bus ridership went down. Everything slowed down. But last two years, I'm back in action. Luckily, uh, FTA granted uh four hundred thousand to do planning studies to NJ Transit along Route Nine Corridor for a bus rapid transit system. And I've been working with them closely. We already had two public meetings to get public input. They were advertised on our website. We were on TV. Um, there was a lot of good input that we got from residents because the coal shopping center is dying. There is a asphalt or a sea of parking which is underutilized, if you look at it. Um, i- it's a presentation for some other day, but I am very confident that we would be close to getting the Transit Village designation. I had a second pre-application meeting last month. We have six months to finish the redevelopment plan on this project. And the good news is, within the radius of half a, half a mile, there is a hundred-acre parcel that is owned by Brunetti and is uh can be developed based on Transit Village standards. So I don't want to look, miss the opportunity, especially because when you are in a Transit Village designation, you get one-on-one, uh, you get point five rental bonus credits if that site is developed. So that is one site. The second one is Raceway Park. Um, if you may recall, we passed a res, uh, ordinance three years ago to um uh to convert it to R one-twenty zoning. The township was sued. We have been in mediation with the property owners through the court. I have been working very closely on a redevelopment plan for that area, and it's guided by the courts, so that is in making. And the last site is the Summers Landfill Site, which uh I have actually christened it as Trecton Square uh so that I am not using a family name. But Trecton Square is nothing but the landfill site. There is a developable portion. There is a developer interested in developing uh that site. Uh, there was actually an area investigation study that was conducted, approved by the planning board as well as the endorsed by the council. Uh, I am working on a redevelopment plan uh because there is land in that landfill area that is uh free of any encumbrances, no uh contamination, and that can be used for residential. There's also a portion that has to be capped and probably can be used for uh recreational fields for the township or come up with a private recreational facility, but the plan is in making. So these three sites are adequate to meet our unmet need, and we will have enough credits and rental bonus credits from uh development of these sites. And I have always said that, I recently attended um the New Jersey Planning Conference where I was speaking about Transit Village. I think it's very important for the township to, uh, you can't really stall development, but it has to be in a streamlined manner. The township needs to decide where you want to focus your growth and where you want to preserve. This will help us preserve some of our properties for open space, the way the plan is written. And I think I did a lot of talking. I'm ready for questions, but before I take questions, I really want to thank my staff, um Emily, who has helped me. We have worked relentlessly. Jo is aware. Weekends, weekends, nights, it was like fourteen six, fourteen to fifteen hours every day. She worked super hard. I couldn't have done without Danny uh because he's a zoning officer. He really doesn't have to help me, but I have full confidence in his knowledge, and he, he knows so much about parcels. He has assisted me throughout the days, uh, getting information, getting da, datas, getting deeds. So thank you, Danny. Uh, Emily, if you're watching, thank you so much. And Maureen for being the support for all three of us, but this was a Herculean task. And uh I think we have accomplished um a plan that I'm excited about. We have to submit our plans uh by, all municipalities, by June thirtieth uh to be covered. And Jo, if I've missed anything, you can fill in before the board.
Yeah, I, I don't, the only thing that I, I, I just wanted to, the board's aware of is um our, our current obligation of six seventy-three that was assigned to us by the court uh through their Affordable Housing Resolution Program uh is currently under appeal. The township council had decided that they wanted to appeal that. Uh, it has under appeal, but we filed a motion for a stay with the court to see if we could either, one, have additional time before we had to adopt this plan to see how the outcome of our appeal would be, or, two, at least allow us to uh uh develop a plan based on our number, which we believe is the correct number versus the number that was assigned from the court. Uh, that motion was denied. So what is in front of you is what we have to do to comply with the law, is comply and put together forth a plan that addresses the whole number six hundred and seventy-three that is assigned by the court. However, we, I just wanted the board be aware that the council did approve an appeal. Appeal has been filed, and it's currently pending with the appellate division. We're waiting to, uh, and actually, as of this afternoon, Fair Share Housing just filed their responsive papers. So we're just waiting for the, the court to set forth briefing schedules, and we'll see how the court handles the appeal. There's just uh, as another side note, there are, as of, as of now, as, that I'm aware of, six or seven other towns that have filed appeals, and there could be up to another six or seven more that may be filing shortly. Uh, but that's um, so we're not the only town that is filing an appeal of, of the decision.
And just one more thing, uh, in this plan, what you will see is the affordability, uh affordability assistant program manual and also a copy of the spending plan. But the affordability assistant manual, as well as the spending plan, is actually from the third round. We have not updated it, only for the reason that uh UHAC and NJHFLA is coming out with new regulations. The new regulations would not have been out before Ja, uh, June thirtieth. So we didn't want to update our uh program until we heard the new regs. So most municipalities are uh just supplementing these plans with the older program that is still in place. The spending plan, I do want to wait uh to update it as well. I'm working on it with the township attorney and uh probably will have it within the next two months. But those are two documents that come from the third round, and that will, will be updated in the next few months. I'll take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Vina. Uh, let's start to my right, Eric.
So Vina, can you, I know we talked about the vacant land, and you and I have had too many conversations about some of the parcels that they came up with. When we went back to them, they obviously took nothing out, right? So that little strip of land that's next to the police parking lot, they're still considering that developable.
Correct. And, but, but here's the difference. So when they came up with the six hundred and eighty-five initially, and they were using tract data, that piece was included, right? They didn't factor it out later when we challenged, but when I did a vacant land analysis, the property is developed according to me. It, there is no room for putting more development. So I did not even consider that part portion.
Uh, but from.
The original numbers, yes, you're right.
But the number is based off, so for folks that are listening, so for the record, if you drive up Route five sixteen, next to the police parking lot, there is a piece of land that I can probably leapfrog, that is maybe ten feet wide, that the state and Fair Share is deciding is a developable piece of land.
Yes, that is correct.
And when we went back to them and said it's a township piece of property, and it's, it's really a, lack of a better term, a side lawn to the, to the parking lot, they're telling us that we need to put houses on it.
That is correct.
So, and, and almost so Dela said that there's about six or seven that are already appealed. There should be five hundred and sixty-four appealing this. Not, not a handful, not a dozen. It's, it's atrocious that, what they're doing. Uh, on another note, the, the six hundred or so, six hundred and seventy-three, right?
Yes.
How many of those, so those are all gonna be net new, correct? So there's no, we have no prior credits or anything like that?
No, we don't have any prior credits.
Okay. So I know there was a lot of conversation. I, I just want to make sure that it's clear to everybody, especially the board members who haven't been through this and haven't had a lot of conversations with you. So yes, we might, we have some credits. We have some here. We have some there. We have uh a couple of applications that are either in front of us, one today, and then as we go forward. That's all new develop that has to be done, right? No one here is pushing for this, right? We have to go into these conversations with developers in order to meet an obligation by the state to do so, right? And it's, it's very sorry to say that, you know, I don't want to see this town overdeveloped, right? As a councilperson, as a planning board member, and I'm sure everybody up here agrees for that, right? The state is mandating this to be done. They don't care what the township engineer, the township planner, the zoning officer, folks that live in this town, the council that is elected to represent you folks that come up here and um volunteer your time, they don't care what we have to say. All they care about is here's your number, build it. We don't care how it gets done. So when we're out there and folks are really looking at some of the, the properties that are getting developed, whether they're old properties or new properties, the state doesn't care about your woodlands. And anyone that, that is gonna come up here and tell us otherwise is a liar. Because if it was up to me, I would put a close for building in this town, but we have no choice, right? There are lands that are ours that we have to work on to, to get developed because of this, and there are folks that own private, own private land that they, they have the right to develop. But the fact that they can just shove this down our throat, and if we don't agree with it, the builders can go to the courts, and then the courts will make us do it. And we have plenty of pieces of property within this town and surrounding towns that we could show you that the court mandated that we have to do it. So I just want to make sure that everybody understands what is really being presented here. Be, being presented here is the remaking of the town because of what someone who probably lives nowhere near this township thinks that this town should be developed, whether it's Old Bridge, Marlboro, Manalupin, Sayerville. In essence, what they want is just Newark everywhere.
Okay, thank you, Mr. DePomm. Uh, anybody on my left?
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure I understand what everything. Okay, you're saying like this piece by the Public Works area that they're claiming can be developed?
Yes.
So they come in and some, a developer comes in and puts an application into that?
Well, no, we own that piece of property, but what they're doing is, and from the conversation of Vina and I had, they're including that in the, lack of a better term, the square footage of developable land in the town. So if there is, I don't know, ten thousand square feet, I don't know if that's the number. They're saying, well, that's ten thousand square feet that you could develop. Go develop it somewhere else. You can't do it there, but that's still ten thousand square feet that we're telling you that you should be developing. And that's where that number's coming from. Because if, Vina, correct me where I am wrong, I think we were down to like three hundred and change.
Yes.
Based off of reasonable building.
Yes.
And Vina's been in this town for eight years, and everyone up here has been in this town for decades, probably on end, right? I mean, Mayor Cannon, you, you were, you've been here for quite some time. They are just looking at straight up a Google map, what's green? Give me the square footage, build on it. That's what the state did to us. That's what the state's not only doing to us, and I don't want to say did to us, it's doing to the garden state. They're saying, well, if it's green, build it. That's what the state is doing, and it's disgusting.
So we really have no choice.
We, we do, but then you get sued and then you have no choice. So the, the remediation that we can do as a planning board, as zoning boards, is when we have folks come up here and they want to build, have the conversations with the folks that are looking to come in, right? Whether it's Vina or Nicole or whoever else, the ability for them to have the conversations of what fits in that parcel and what fits in this town. of what fits in that parcel and what fits in this town, and make it, make it work what's best for that area, right? We have applications that come up that residents will come out and disagree with how things work. Vina and her team will work with the developer and their engineers to finagle things to make it more palatable for the neighbors and more palatable for the area. That's our power. That's the power of this board and the power of the administration, is to make sure that it's, that it somewhat fits into the makeup of what we feel this town needs to be, right? Unfortunately, it can't be all green, but we could try our best to do it, which we did with the, think about what we did with the warehouses. That would have been 7,000 to 10,000 residential units up and down Route 9. We made a decision to stop 7,000 to 10,000 units, which is probably 20,000 additional cars on Route 9 because of development, right? We made a decision that what's best for this township was those, was those warehouses because it didn't put a excess strain on the schools, an excess strain on the utilities, on power, right, on our emergency services, right? If that area was developed in the way that it was actually approved to, right, we would have been sitting with, we have eight or so thousand kids, we probably would have had 15,000 students in our school system, which we don't have the schools for, which we would have had to, you know, it's bad enough, we have to, the taxes are being raised enough. Think about how much more if you had to build schools. Because now you cannot ask a builder, you cannot ask a developer to build a school like they did in the past, right? Go up like Cindy Street and all those areas, you got schools, those were built by those developers. That's not allowed any longer, like to have that. I mean, I'm sure they could out of their goodwill, but I highly doubt that would happen.
Any other questions on my left? Good.
First, I'd like to thank Vina and her staff. Monumental task. You know, I travel the building, I see how hard everybody's always working, so I think
Thank you so much.
everybody should recognize you and your team for how hard you worked. You know, then, you know, Councilman De Palma made some really good points, and, you know, I'm born in Old Bridge, raised in Old Bridge, I work in Old Bridge, my family's being raised in Old Bridge, I'm Old Bridge proud. If there's Old Bridge proud, it's me. I'm in town every day. Residents ask, what are you doing on the planning board? How come you're approving all this, this building? And, you know, they just see that these trees are being knocked down and these things are being built. And, you know, I try to explain to them to the best of my ability that, you know, there are certain things that we can control, you know, like you putting your plan together and saying, this works for Old Bridge, this is going to be our best option, and other things that we can't control. And, you know, we really fight for that, you know, we, I do. That's why I got involved almost 10 years ago with the planning board, and because I care about my town. So Eric made some really good points, and I think the awareness to the residents, you know, of why this happens, you know, there's, nobody wants to see Old Bridge destroyed. You know, I sure don't. I want my kids to be raised in the same town that I was. I also realize that we need, you know, positive growth, so you try to balance it out. I think we're doing the best that we can, and I appreciate, again, all your hard work, and, you know, just keep fighting the good fight, and hopefully Old Bridge stays as green as possible.
Thank you.
Anyone else on my left? Okay, I have a couple of questions. Did Alfari, did we get anything Alfari as far as credits with?
Yeah, that was round two. That was used for, no, round three, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, you mean the application we just recently approved?
Yes.
Yes, that applies actually to round three.
Okay.
So actually-
But we are getting credits for those.
Right, if you look at the plan, there is a section where it says prior round compliance, and we had a couple of projects. We had Avalon Bay, we had Alfari. So there is a chart that shows where we stand with compliance. So we are, I think we approved most of the projects except for one, which is the Oaks Two, the Route 9 MUIH. And the surprising thing was, when DCA came up with our 685, that property, in spite of having an ordinance in place to be developed, was included as vacant land, and Joe and I were fighting over it because it's like double counting. You, we already are using it to address the third round, how can you say now it's vacant and slam us with a new number? But that's the only site that has no action yet, but that's not true too. Oaks One, which is the Edgewood MVM project that was approved, Regency Center that was approved, there's a White Oak Lane South extension that actually gives access to the Alfari, to the, not Alfari, I'm sorry, Route 9 MUIH zone, and that roadway is under construction, so they are working towards, it's not like there is no activity, the infrastructure improvements are being done so that the development really occurs. So it's something that is going to happen in, soon, but we are still waiting for an official application from them. But otherwise, I think the 200% affordable projects, one on Marlboro Road, the 72-unit project, is nearing completion. The Habitat for Humanity, the 12 homes that were in the Harbor area, they're nearing completion, so they're starting construction. So we are actually in a very good shape with the third round. And that's the sad part, because ever since I took over, any project that came to planning board or zoning board, we have been extremely proactive, arguing with developers to provide affordable housing. So in spite of all the sincere efforts that we have been taking over the last eight years, we have been questioned or penalized for having vacant land, which is so very constrained. But let's see where we go with this.
Well, I might have missed that on, by the way, there was so much information in that report, it's just like, I mean, I'd be lying if I said I understood any or all of it. But my other question, the vacant land, I noticed there's a lot of vacant land between Farrington Road and Cottrell Road, and I know Burnettty owns its farmland, there's a reason that was not pointed out on your, your list.
Which is the one?
Well, in Area, Area 10. That would be between 516 and Farrington Road and Cottrell-
Oh, yes. So when you do a vacant land analysis, you look at Class 1, Class 15C, and underutilized parcels. But properties that are active farms, they are classified differently. So unless those are no longer being farmed properties and are vacant, I don't really include. Now, I can say that in future, Burnettty might not joust to us and say that, okay, we want to do something with it. But we're hoping that, you know, see, I think this is a policy document, right? It helps the township come, make policy decisions, whether it's any open space farm or an underutilized parcel, as to where you want to see growth, and then maybe work towards preserving some of those areas. So it's a great guide for the council to take action, and then even for the developers or farmers that want to transfer, because there have been some farmers interested in transferring their development rights to some other location. So if somebody comes to me and says, I want to preserve the farm, and I want to transfer my development rights to potentially Transit Village because that's where the high density will go, we'll be happy to preserve the farm and transfer the rights somewhere else. So this is a great tool and a policy document that helps you plan the township.
Like that part that I just, that parcel that I just spoke about, it's R40. So if somebody was going to build houses, single-family houses, okay, in, let's say for 50, 50 houses, they still could build single-family houses and comply with an obligation of affordable units too, right?
True, but that's very, it's like a hypothetical question, because typically when you are building single-family homes, you don't see somebody providing you obligation. In that sense, they would provide you with the development fees in lieu of providing affordable units. So typically, what I have seen is developers, when they're building apartments or townhouses or stacked townhouses, they are okay to provide affordable housing on-site. But when it's a single-family home, it's very hard to get an affordable unit. For example, the board had approved 220 Gordon Road, there was a subdivision that was approved for 13 lots. They chose, instead of having two units as affordable, they chose to pay money for the development, based on the development fee ordinance in lieu of providing those units.
Well, like in High Point-
But yes, they don't, the obligation doesn't go away.
Right.
Whether it's in monetary form towards the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, which then helps us fund, or that's where our spending plan comes from, that's where our rehabilitation share comes from, or to provide onsite units. We, or me as a planner, I prefer the onsite units because we have an active Affordable Housing Trust Fund. We do collect money from the commercial uses, because even the commercial developers have to provide in money for the development, the fund, but it's very hard to get a unit from a for sale, a single-family home.
Well, I was referring to like High Point, where they built all these single-family houses, nice houses, and then they have one section of, I would call them townhouses, are connected together that are affordable.
Yeah.
At that time, so I guess it can be done.
It can be done when, so we recently went through K-Half and Regency Center and Edgewood Properties, like three different developers. But if you recall, it was one general development plan, right? So the commercial, the single-family homes, all of them were approved, but with the mindset that a total of, I'm just throwing in the number, 1,300 homes, but out of that, there was an affordable housing component. When Edgewood came in, they agreed to build those, I think it's 144 affordable units within the townhouses and the apartments. So there is a different ways to build them onsite.
Okay, and my last question might be for the attorney. This, this plan is supposed to last for 10 years, okay? In 10 years, we're going to have either three different governors, or maybe the same governor. Does the governor, I see he gets involved, does he, is it possible this could all change?
Yes.
For the better?
Well, yes, absolutely. I mean, this, this, this act that was adopted and that we're following currently, the act that we're currently following, the amended Fair Housing Act, was recently amended under, you know, this current governor's regime and the administration, and it is designed to go on in perpetuity. It's supposed to be the 5th, we follow, it can be, the way it's written will be applied to the 5th, 6th, and so forth moving forward. But at any time, the act can be amended, again, just like this act, you know, abolished COA, which was our, you know, first and second round mechanism of compliance. You know, next year, two years from now, the legislature can enact a new law that further amends this or repeals this altogether and comes up with a whole new mechanism that could change the whole method, way, methodology of providing affordable housing altogether. It won't, the Affordable Housing Obligation itself won't go away because the Supreme Court and the Mount Laurel decisions found that it is actually a New Jersey constitutional right, so there will always be some type of obligation unless there's a constitutional amendment that's adopted. But the way it's handled, how it's handled, the mechanisms, whether it's on a local level or the state level, yes, that can always change at any time.
Okay, thank you. Oh, one more question, go ahead.
Maybe it's been answered, but, so these, these parcels that you've looked at, that you say, you know, because of constraints and so forth, it really cannot be developed, or cannot be developed with the numbers that they're giving us. Is there an appeal to that, or?
Yes, well, when it comes to determination of what our obligation is, the 673, we're appealing that.
Okay.
We're appealing that because we believe, meaning the township, when we did all of our calculations and worked off of the DCA's formulas and numbers, that our obligation is 369.
Right, okay.
So that is currently being appealed at the appellate division.
We can use that as, as evidence that the numbers they gave us just are not workable.
Oh, yes, we'll be, we'll be fighting that. Where we can fight, Councilman De Palma made 100% accurate points, but I just want to supplement by saying, where we can fight in that mechanism while still being compliant, we are, and we, and we're making sure that the town is protected.
Okay, I think we'll open it up for the public now. If, does anybody from the public would like to comment? See no hands, I close the public session? Okay.
Yes, yes, Mr. Chairman, we, I prepared a resolution for the boards, if they're going to act favorably in adopting the housing element and fair share plan that was presented by Vina, was circulated and provided to the public. I would request that the board act on the resolution because I do have to, as the township's Affordable, Special Affordable Housing Council, have to have this filed by June 30th, and it has to be, you know, approved by resolution. So I would request that if the board is going to act favorably, if it would adopt the resolution that was provided.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Reluctantly move it.
I'll reluctantly second.
Mr. De Palma?
Yeah.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
I reluctantly vote yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Masella?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lauer.
I'm reluctant, but yes, too. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, while we take a break, actually before we do, the board can still act, because we do have the other resolution on, so.
Okay. Okay.
Just trying to keep business moving.
Okay, second resolution is 20, 50-2024P Oak 18 LLC. Can I get a motion to move that forward?
Move it.
Mr. De Palma, go ahead.
A second.
Mr. Petty?
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Masella?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lauer.
Yes. Okay, now we start our five-minute break.
Yes.
And Chairman Lauer.
Yes. Okay, now we start our five-minute break. Okay. Eric? Okay. Anybody on my left have a question?
Just want to say thank you for trying to work with the people behind us, or behind you, the neighbors, because that room was filled.
Trying to make your life easy.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I think the project looks great. I didn't have a problem with it too much in the past, but I like the fact that there's wetlands going to be preserved. Route 9 and Texas Road, I know it's not your problem, but it's a nightmare out there, and maybe more traffic will help the state and the county to get together. But, okay, let's open up to the public.
I just would like to get, I think you're entitled to have Allison, our planner, come up and say that her testimony still remains. I think that's important for this board to have on the record.
I think the chairman was just opening up to the public for questions of this witness.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I apologize.
Seeing no hands, I close the public. Next witness.
I'm sorry, we're doing everybody.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you very much. Allison testified on the application. Last time, she's a professional planner, she's still under oath, she was sworn, Allison, if you could just share with the board your thoughts about the modifications.
Sure, no problem. Good evening, everyone. For the record, Peter Clauser with the firm Hobart and Pape. I'm going to make this very easy. We just heard a lot of information. We were one of those applications, one of those pieces of property that Vena was talking about, that are providing 14 affordable units. The last time that we were here, we presented the entire application, public was open, public was closed, and we were only coming back for a vote. The reason that we did that is we were asked by the municipality, and certainly the applicant, on their own consideration, said, just look at your project one more time, see if there's anything that you can do to address any of the concerns that Madison, our neighbors, had. You'll remember the room was full the last time that we were here. So I am amazing. No, so we, we were able to, Scott was able to figure out a way, our engineer, to move the building a little bit by kind of splitting the parking front to back. And we were able to make that change, because you may recall, their major concern that we were hearing was the setback to the buildings that were there. Now, it didn't come that easily, and there's a lot of people that take credit for it. Vena, again, your council persons, communicating with Madison, and then we finally had to sit down with them in the township, with your representatives, our representatives, a couple of people from the board at Madison, and everybody seems to be happy. So I want to tell you, nothing about the project has changed. You know, numbers of units, the way that it operates, the architecture, the buildings, Scott's going to show you what the change is. It's a very brief presentation, just to show you those dimensions. I'm going to ask Allison, who's our professional planner, to come up and simply affirm that based on the modification, her planning testimony has not changed, and then I'm going to ask you to vote on the application. Now, the one thing that is a little different, because a building moved, these engineers, that makes a lot of work for them, it makes a lot of work for your engineers. So we're only going to ask you for preliminary approval, the preliminary site plan approval. It's a little unusual in Old Bridge, you're actually more accustomed to granting preliminary and final all at once, but we have to give everybody time to do the engineering, but we need to take a step forward. So we're asking for preliminary approval, we're also asking for you to grant the variance, deviations, and waivers that were requested the last time we were here. They're all memorialized in Vena's report, we agree with them, they were put on the record the last time that we were here, so I would just ask if you include that in your preliminary. And then Scott and your team will go to work, and we'll come back at some point, we'll have a very nice, short, pleasant meeting where we ask for a final approval and tell you that we did all the things that were in this, that were in this report. So if I could, I'm going to add, Scott was sworn the last time that he was here, I would remind him that he's still under oath, he was accepted by you as a professional engineer, he designed the project, and I would ask if he could just briefly take you through the modifications.
Sure, no problem. Good evening, everybody. My name is Scott Turner from Menlo Engineering. I do recognize that I still am under oath. We presented, for the purposes of this hearing, a new rendering that's up on the screen, it's the Villas at Merle's Corner, it's an overall plan exhibit. Its original date was 2/21/25, and we put a revision date of June 26, 2025. And it's an overall exhibit of the entire parcel on top of a Google image. My testimony should be fairly brief tonight, we're really going to focus on just the modifications that we've been making over the past month or so. What we did...
I'm sorry, I apologize for interfering.
That's okay.
I just wanted to make sure we properly identify the exhibit for the record. Is this, was this the one that was previously identified as A1, that we're modifying?
It was A1, but it is a revision to A1.
All right, so.
We should mark it, I think, as a new exhibit, I think.
Okay, no, no, I appreciate that, and don't disagree. So I'm just trying to now look to see what the last exhibit we marked was. Sorry. The last one I see is A3. No, no, it's fine, just give me one second to go through. Yeah, I know. That's what I'm being teased about. Yeah, I think I have, the last one I have is A3, so this will be A4.
That sounds right, yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, good. So what we did with this modification is we focused on this rear area where building number one was placed, and what we were able to do is we shifted building one up to the north, further away from the rear property line and from our neighbors. So now that building is set back along the rear property, 79 feet versus 37 feet previously. The 37-feet rear yard setback created a variance, as I'm sure you all remember. Now that we're at 79 feet, we've eliminated the rear yard setback variance. A product of doing that, however, is that we had to realign and readjust the parking that's necessary for the development itself, and what we did is we brought a new driveway and roadway around the back of the building. And that certainly helps in terms of circulation, because it's now tied into the other areas of the property. I know the fire marshal reviewed it, and he certainly liked this plan better because it's easier for him to get around, so there's some benefits to that. However, now, behind building number one, there is a driveway and a parking lot. The driveway itself, the curb line along the back is set back 30 feet from the rear setback line, so in my opinion, it's a healthy setback from the, from the rear line. And we took the one single retaining wall that we had in the back that was about 10 feet in height, and we tiered it to be roughly four to five feet tall, retaining walls in the rear, and we maintained the buffer between the top wall and the rear property line that we testified to previously, where we put a significant amount of buffer plantings between the rear property, our neighbors, and our retaining wall. And that's all, we have not changed that buffer scheme, that's all going to be there, and in fact, there'll be additional plantings because of the tiered wall system. So those are the real physical changes on the property itself. The parking, we did a new parking analysis, of course, based on this change. We only have a loss of three parking spaces from the prior plan, so we have a total of 137 physical parking spaces on the ground, where 135 feet, or 135 spaces are required, so we are compliant still with the parking demand for the property. And there's no change to the building footprint whatsoever, we literally just took it and pushed it up. The only minor modification to the building is the interior space where we, the architect had to do a little bit of modification on the inside, just to provide a small rear lobby and entrance so that people could get into the building from the back. But there's, there's no other change to that building whatsoever. We also, part of the presentation and what we made modifications to was the cross-section exhibit, and I'll just show that to you very briefly, if you could put the cross-section up there. So this is a new exhibit, the Villas at Merle's Corner, cross-section AA exhibit. It's dated June 26, 2025, and we can mark this as Exhibit A5. This will more than likely look familiar to you, this is what we had presented at the last hearing, where we, we put together this cross-section, however, we modified this to identify the changes made to the site plan. We now show that our building number one, rear line, is set back 79 feet from the rear property line. We have now the rear parking lot, cars parked up against the curb line and sidewalk next to the building, and then the 24-foot-wide drive aisle, the curb, and then the two-tiered retaining walls with some landscaping at each plateau, and then the, you know, the landscape buffer planting plan that we previously discussed at prior hearings, and then, of course, these are our neighbors to the rear, that, you know, no change to that other than, you know, applying the new building setback itself. So you could still see, we are still significantly lower in height, that hasn't changed, it's just shifted further away from them.
Thank you, Scott. I have no further questions. I have no further questions for Scott, he's available if the board had any questions about these changes.
Okay, Mr. Darcey, would you like to go first?
Mr. Chairman.
All right. We've had extensive conversations and meetings with the applicant professionals in the preparation of the revised plans, and I don't have any questions for Mr. Turner, because the applicants are applying for preliminary only at this time, and we're confident that the comments in our review memo will be addressed as part of the final site plan application, so the board acts favorably.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tetchow?
Yeah, I think Rakesh pretty well summarized everything, there's, I think that the issues that are out there will be resolved in final, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I just interrupt for one minute? I do want to get on the record, because I did forget, and Rakesh pointed it out in the review letter. We do have the new letter, it's dated June 24, 2025. There are a couple of just clarifications in that letter we should get on record. One specifically is in regards to the 30-foot setback along the rear property line, it's the tract perimeter buffer requirement. The letter indicates that it's still at 30 feet, which was what it was, I'm sorry, it was 37 feet in the letter, but the actual tract buffer setback now, based on this new plan to the curb line, is 30 feet. So there's a design exception required for a 30-foot setback, not 37. So I wanted to just clarify that. And then just another minor clarification is the parking spaces, we are providing 137 spaces, there's 140 pointed out in the letter, that's the net reduction, so we have 137, not 140. Just wanted to make sure we got that clarified.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Eric, okay. Anybody on my left have a question?
Just a pity. I just want to say thank you for trying to work with the people behind us, or behind you, the neighbors, because that room was filled.
Trying to make your life easy.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I think the project looks great. I didn't have a problem with it too much in the past, but I like the fact that there's wetlands going to be preserved. Route 9 and Texas Road, I know it's not your problem, but it's a nightmare out there, and maybe more traffic will help the state and the county to get together. But, okay, let's open up to the public.
I just would like to get, I think you're entitled to have Allison, our planner, come up and say that her testimony still remains. I think that's important for this board to have on the record.
I think the chairman was just opening up to the public for questions of this witness.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I apologize.
Seeing no hands, I close the public. Next witness.
I'm sorry, we're doing everybody.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you very much. Allison testified on the application. Last time, she's a professional planner, she's still under oath, she was sworn. Allison, if you could just share with the board your thoughts about the modifications.
Sure, I don't think these modifications rise to a level where it would change the opinion that I previously gave the board. It's a slight change to the buffer design exception, but the reasons that I supported the variance and the design exceptions before still stand. So unless the board wants to hear me talk for another 20 minutes, we can leave it at that.
Thank you, Allison.
You're welcome.
Okay, professionals, any comment?
Let your Allison talk for 20 more minutes.
I'd like Rakesh to leave.
No, Mr. Chairman, I have no questions.
I have no questions.
Just, I just want to, just a quick comment, so I just want to thank Mr. Clauser, the engineer, the planner, and everyone on that team and the developer for hearing the residents and addressing their issues. As I said earlier, I'll bring the affordable housing piece back into it. This is the, this is the opportunity that this board has, as well as residents, to come up and work on a more palatable development coming next to whether it's their home or other areas. So I do want to thank you. I know it's, it's an excess cost, that it costs its time, effort, for not only the folks here, but also our planners, but I did want to make sure that I thanked you guys on the record, because...
Appreciate that.
It's easy to say I moved the picture, it's not as simple as just cutting that out and moving it up. It's not an erector set, it's not Legos, you know, these are millions, millions of dollars worth of designs that are going to be put in, and just so you guys all know, we do appreciate everything that was done to make sure that this room wasn't filled again with those residents and their displeasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody on my left? Go ahead.
I just wanted to get to what Eric said, I think he's been very responsive, and I think that it bodes well. He set a good example for future...
Thank you very much.
...developers.
Okay, I have no comment. Thank you for your testimony. Now, going to open up to the public. Any questions? Seeing no hands, close the public.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify again, what I'm asking the board to do this evening is to obviously approve, a preliminary approval, along with the, there's design exceptions from your plan, there's some bulk variance relief, which again, was all put on the record, and a handful of waivers, they're all identified in your professionals' report, I said Vena's report, but you have a combined report. So grant that relief, we'll go back to work, and we'll come back with a nice final application.
Okay, can I get a motion to move this forward?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Masella?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lauer?
Yes. Okay, now we start our five-minute break. Okay. Eric? Okay, anybody on my left have a question? Just a pity.
I just want to say thank you for trying to work with the people behind us, or behind you, the neighbors, because that room was filled.
Trying to make your life easy.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I think the project looks great. I didn't have a problem with it too much in the past, but I like the fact that there's wetlands going to be preserved. Route 9 and Texas Road, I know it's not your problem, but it's a nightmare out there, and maybe more traffic will help the state and the county to get together. But, okay, let's open up to the public.
I just would like to get, I think you're entitled to have Allison, our planner, come up and say that her testimony still remains. I think that's important for this board to have on the record.
I think the chairman was just opening up to the public for questions of this witness.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I apologize.
Seeing no hands, I close the public. Next witness.
I'm sorry, we're doing everybody.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you very much. Allison testified on the application. Last time, she's a professional planner, she's still under oath, she was sworn. Allison, if you could just share with the board your thoughts about the modifications.
Sure, I don't think these modifications rise to a level where it would change the opinion that I previously gave the board. It's a slight change to the buffer design exception, but the reasons that I supported the variance and the design exceptions before still stand. So unless the board wants to hear me talk for another 20 minutes, we can leave it at that.
Thank you, Allison.
You're welcome.
Okay, professionals, any comment?
Let your Allison talk for 20 more minutes.
I'd like Rakesh to leave.
No, Mr. Chairman, I have no questions.
I have no questions.
Just, I just want to, just a quick comment, so I just want to thank Mr. Clauser, the engineer, the planner, and everyone on that team and the developer for hearing the residents and addressing their issues. As I said earlier, I'll bring the affordable housing piece back into it. This is the, this is the opportunity that this board has, as well as residents, to come up and work on a more palatable development coming next to whether it's their home or other areas. So I do want to thank you. I know it's, it's an excess cost, that it costs its time, effort, for not only the folks here, but also our planners, but I did want to make sure that I thanked you guys on the record, because...
Appreciate that.
It's easy to say I moved the picture, it's not as simple as just cutting that out and moving it up. It's not an erector set, it's not Legos, you know, these are millions, millions of dollars worth of designs that are going to be put in, and just so you guys all know, we do appreciate everything that was done to make sure that this room wasn't filled again with those residents and their displeasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody on my left? Go ahead.
I just wanted to get to what Eric said, I think he's been very responsive, and I think that it bodes well. He set a good example for future...
Thank you very much.
...developers.
Okay, I have no comment. Thank you for your testimony. Now, going to open up to the public. Any questions? Seeing no hands, close the public.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to clarify again, what I'm asking the board to do this evening is to obviously approve, a preliminary approval, along with the, there's design exceptions from your plan, there's some bulk variance relief, which again, was all put on the record, and a handful of waivers, they're all identified in your professionals' report, I said Vena's report, but you have a combined report. So grant that relief, we'll go back to work, and we'll come back with a nice final application.
Okay, can I get a motion to move this forward?
I'll move.
I'll second.
Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Masella?
Yes.
Mr. McIsaac?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lauer?
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
You too.
Just while we're getting started for the next application, I just want to make two quick announcements. For anyone that's here in the public that's for the last two applications on the agenda, Fox Houses LLC, application number 37, 2004P, that is being adjourned. It is the, the next hearing date that that is scheduled for is September 25th, so there'll be no further notice provided for that application, it will be heard at the September 25th Planning Board Meeting.
Retaining walls in the rear, and we maintained the buffer between the top wall and the rear property line that we testified to previously, where we put a significant amount of buffer plantings between the rear property, our neighbors, and our retaining wall. And that's all, we have not changed that buffer scheme. That's all going to be there, and in fact, there'll be additional plantings because of the tiered wall system. So those are the real physical changes on the property itself. The parking, we did a new parking analysis, of course, based on this change. We only have a loss of three parking spaces from the prior plan, so we have a total of one hundred and thirty-seven physical parking spaces on the ground, where a hundred and thirty-five feet, or a hundred and thirty-five spaces are required. So we are compliant still with the parking demand for the property. And there's no change to the building footprint whatsoever. We literally just took it and pushed it up. The only minor modification to the building is the interior space where we, the architect, had to do a little bit of modification on the inside just to provide a small rear lobby and entrance so that people could get into the building from the back. But there's, there's no other change to that building whatsoever. We also, part of the presentation and what we made modifications to was the cross-section exhibit, and I'll just show that to you very briefly. If you could put the cross-section up there. So this is a new exhibit, the Villas at Merle's Corner, cross-section AA exhibit. It's dated June twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five, and we can mark this as exhibit A5. This will more than likely look familiar to you. This is what we had presented at the, at the last hearing where we, we put together this cross-section. However, we modified this to identify the changes made to the site plan. We now show that our building number one rear line is set back seventy-nine feet from the rear property line. We have now the rear parking lot, cars parked up against the curb line and sidewalk next to the building, and then the twenty-four-foot wide drive aisle, the curb, and then the two tiered retaining walls with some landscaping at each plateau, and then the, you know, the landscape buffer planting plan that we previously discussed at prior hearings. And then, of course, these are our neighbors to the rear that, you know, no change to that other than, you know, applying the new building setback itself. So you could still see, we are still significantly lower in height. That hasn't changed, it's just shifted further away from them.
Thank you, Scott. I have no further questions. I have no further questions for Scott. He's available off the board. How many questions about these changes?
Okay, Mr. Darcey, would you like to go first?
Mr. Chair. Sorry. We've had extensive conversations and meetings with the applicant professionals in the preparation of the revised plans, and I don't have any questions for, for Mr. Turner. The applicant's applying for preliminary only at this time, and we're confident that the comments in our memo will be addressed as part of the final site plan application to the board actively.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tetra?
Yeah, I think Rakesh pretty well summarized everything. There's, I think that the issues that are out there will be resolved in final, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just interrupt for one minute? I, I do want to get on the record because I did forget, and Rakesh pointed it out in the review letter. We do have the new letter. It's dated June twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five. There are a couple of just clarifications in that letter we should get on record. One specifically is in regards to the thirty-foot setback along the rear property line. It's the tract perimeter buffer requirement. The, the letter indicates that it's still at thirty feet, which was what it was, I'm sorry, it was thirty-seven feet in the letter, but the actual tract buffer setback now, based on this new plan to the curb line, is thirty feet. So there's a design exception required for a thirty-foot setback, not thirty-seven. So I wanted to just clarify that. And then just another minor clarification is the parking spaces. We are providing one hundred and thirty-seven spaces. There's a hundred and forty pointed out in the letter. That's the net reduction, so we have the one thirty-seven, not one forty. Just wanted to make sure we got that clarified.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Eric. Okay. Anybody on my left have a question? Just a pity.
I just want to say thank you for trying to work with the people behind us, or behind you, the neighbors, because that room was filled.
Try to make your life easy.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Well, I think the project looks great. I didn't have a problem with it too much in the past, but I like the fact that there's wetlands gonna be preserved. Route nine and, and Texas Road, I know it's not your problem, but this, it's a nightmare out there, and maybe more traffic will help the state and the county to get together. But, okay, let's open up to the public.
Have just, I just would like to get, I think you're entitled to have Allison, our planner, come up and say that her testimony still remains. I think that's important for this board to have on the record.
I, I think the chairman was just open to the public for questions of this witness.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. I apologize.
Seeing no hands, I close the public. Next witness.
I'm sorry. Thought we were doing everybody wants. Allison, if you could...
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you very much. Allison testified on the application. Last time's professional planner, she's still under oath, she was sworn. Allison, if you could just share with the board your thoughts about the modifications.
Sure. I don't think these modifications rise to a level where it would change the opinion that I previously gave the board. It's a slight change to the buffer design exception, but the reasons that I supported the variance and the design exceptions before still stand. So unless the board wants to hear me talk for another twenty minutes, we can leave it at that.
Thank you, Allison.
You're welcome.
Okay, professionals, any comment?
I'd like Allison to talk for twenty more minutes.
I'd like Rakesh to leave.
I second.
No, Mr. Chairman, I have no questions. I have no questions.
Just, I just want to, just a quick comment. So I just want to thank Mr. Klausert, the engineer, the planner, and everyone on that team and the developer for hearing the residents and addressing their issues. As I said earlier, when, I'll bring the affordable housing piece back into it. This is the, this is the opportunity that this board has, as well as residents, to come up and work on a more palatable development coming next to whether it's their home or other areas. So I do want to thank you. I know it's, it's an excess cost, that it costs its time, effort, for not only the folks here, but also our planners, but I did want to make sure that I thanked you guys on the record because...
Appreciate that.
It's easy to say I moved the picture. It's not as simple as just cutting that out and moving it up. It's not an erector set, it's not Legos. You know, these are million, millions of dollars' worth of designs that are gonna be put in, and just so you guys all know, we do appreciate everything that was done to make sure that this room wasn't filled again with those residents and their displeasure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody on my left? Go ahead.
I just wanted to get to what Eric said. I think he's been very responsive, and, and I think that it bodes well. He set a good example for future...
Thank you very much.
...developers.
Okay, I have no comment. Thank you for your testimony. Now I'm gonna open up to the public. Any questions? Seeing no hands, close the public.
So then, Mr. Chair, just to clarify again, what I'm asking the board to do this evening is to obviously approve a preliminary approval along with the, there's design exceptions from your, your, your plan, there's some bulk variance relief, which all, again, was all put on the record, and a handful of waivers. They're all identified in your professionals' report. I said Vina's report, but you have a combined report. So grant that relief, we'll go back to work, and we'll come back with a, a nice final application.
Okay, can I get a motion to move this forward?
I'll move.
Motion.
I'll second.
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Missella?
Yes.
Mr. McGyser?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lowry?
Yes. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
I know nobody's in the audience for these two. Should we have announced? We can do it right now, if you want me to.
Yeah.
Before we get started.
Just while we're getting set up for the next application, I just want to make two quick announcements. For anyone that's here in the public that's for the last two applications on the agenda, Fox Houses LLC, application number thirty-seven, two thousand four P, that is being adjourned. It is the, the next hearing date that that is scheduled for is September twenty-fifth, so there'll be no further notice provided for that application. It will be heard at the September twenty-fifth Planning Board meeting. Lastly, with regard to the last application, Community Bible Fellowship Church, application number three-three, two thousand four P, that is also being adjourned. That is being adjourned to the August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five Planning Board meeting, and that also is being adjourned without further notice. So if you're here on either one of those applications, Fox Houses, please come to the twenty-fifth, September twenty-fifth app, board hearing, and if you're here for the Community Bible Fellowship Church, please come to the August twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five Planning Board meeting.
Thank you. Okay, up next is application thirty-five, twenty-two-four P, Olbridge Regency Village LLC. It's a minor subdivision. Attorney Kenneth Pape is representing the applicant. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, board's professionals, staff, and public. Kenneth Pape, on behalf of your applicant, this is a technical or financial minor subdivision. There is virtually no proposed revisions to the Regency Shopping Center. We're asking that this board permit a technical subdivision so that the property associated with Target can have its own lot and block designation, so that Target can pay their taxes directly. The ordinance actually contemplates technical and financial subdivisions. The, there's no physical change at all to the property, and the, when the properties are subdivided, they are then reattached to each other through a, a, a system of cross-parking, cross-circulation, cross-drainage, and cross-utility easements, so that it continues to function exactly the same. So that is our opening statement. We've provided notice in advance at the hearing. I trust that our notices were found to be in order, Mr. Sidella?
Yes.
Thank you. Our testimony will be approximately one and a half minutes from Brian Enes, who's alongside of me. I think you've got the picture already, and then because there's a variance required, there'll be about three minutes of Allison Coffin. If we could have Mr. Enes sworn, and we'll share his credentials with you.
Absolutely, please, uh, thank you. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening? Is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth? I do. Could you just please state and spell your name for the record? Uh, yes. Brian Enes, B-R-Y-A-N-E-H-N-E-S.
And Brian, if you could share with the board your professional and educational background?
Uh, yes, I work at Bowler Engineering, B-O-H-L-E-R. Our address is one-twenty-five Half Mile Road, Suite two-hundred-and-seven in Red Bank, New Jersey. I graduated from NJIT with a bachelor's degree in civil engineering, have been with Bowler for approximately fifteen years, and have been a practicing professional engineer for over ten years, and my license is in good standing.
Are you responsible for the plan that you're about to present to the board?
Yes.
I'm gonna ask if you could describe to the board the plan that is before them, and go, I'm giving you ninety seconds to tell them where that red line is on the plan and, and confirm that there's no physical changes to the, to the plan.
Yes, and I...
Mr. Pape, I'm sorry to interrupt. Brian, I'm having...
I may go to one hundred and twenty seconds. Give me one moment. Sorry about the...
There you go.
This is the one you gave it.
Oh, it doesn't have the red line on it.
Oh, okay.
Everybody has their own...
There's a red line on it.
That's it.
Shoot, I'm sorry. There was an extra...
Cut the lease line off. Removed one extra line.
So essentially, what I just passed out is Building B subdivision for Target Plan, prepared by Matrix New World, and it's dated June twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five. As Mr. Pape already alluded to, the red box you see on that plan is the subdivision line, and again, I will confirm there are no physical changes to anything on site of how it operates or circulates.
I have no further testimony required of Mr. Enes, and if, with your permission, I don't see any public I can go to.
Okay, I'd like to open up to our professionals.
I have no questions. I have no questions for, for Mr. Enes.
Mr. Tetra?
I have no questions.
Eric?
Make it easy for folks to pay their taxes, I'm good.
Anybody on my left? One little question I have. The trucks in the back, they'll be able to cross over it?
Absolutely no change at all in operation.
Okay.
Zero.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'll open up to the public. Seeing no hands, I'll close the public.
Thank you very much.
Okay, can we get a motion to move this?
Uh, well, we're gonna, there is gonna be a variance, we have a minor to testify.
Oh, oh, okay.
And as Allison's coming for it...
My apologies.
As Allison's coming for it, I'll tell you that we've had the opportunity to meet with your professionals, and the idea that circulated, which we thought was a terrific idea, would be to prepare subdivision deeds and embed all of the cross-utility, cross-parking, embed all that into the actual subdivision deeds. You'll have the opportunity to review the form and content.
That, that...
Sounds acceptable to me.
Yeah.
We thought it was a great idea.
Yeah, absolutely.
It didn't come from this side of the table, it came from Rakesh.
And just for the record as well, I, I know this looks like, just like the, the version that was submitted, what you had circulated, but let's just mark it as exhibit A1 just for record killer purposes.
And as you're doing that, Allison Coffin could be sworn?
Oh, yes.
I think you have her credentials, but we'll reduce them briefly.
Yeah, just for this, the record for this application, do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening? Is it truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you please state your name and spell it for the record?
Allison Coffin, C-O-F-F-I-N. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey and certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners.
You're accepted.
Yes, it's not changing.
If you think so kind as just to share with the board the proofs that would support the granting of the variances for this technical subdivision.
Sure. So with a technical subdivision, little bit of relief we need. There's no technical frontage for this lot, so the lot frontage is zero. We've got side yard setback that is technically at zero feet because the lot line passes right through the wall, the shared walls of the, the two commercial entities. So when we're looking at a lot that has no frontage, there's also a part of the municipal land use law that applies here. It's section C colon forty fifty-five D dash thirty-five, and that is when you're creating a lot that has no frontage. The, the board has to look at some certain conditions as to whether or not you could issue a permit for a building or structure or create a lot that has no frontage with a building or structure on it. And that involves looking at whether or not the site can function safely. Does it provide adequate access for firefighting equipment, ambulances, and other emergency vehicles, that sort of thing? In this situation where we have a development that already completely exists and functions, clearly this lot has adequate safety for, for firefighting equipment and ambulances as such, and circulation that was already approved doesn't change as a result of the subdivision. And when it comes to the variance relief that the applicant's requesting, that's also technical in nature because we're not changing anything physically about this lot, it's just putting a lot line around one of the buildings for tax and financial purposes. So given that there's no change to the approved plans other than subdividing a portion of that parcel out, I think the board would be justified in granting the relief that's being requested.
I have no further examination of Ms. Coffin. She's available to the board.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to the professionals?
No questions. No questions.
Mr. Palma? Anybody on my left? Okay, I gotta open up her testimony to the public. Seeing, seeing any hands or public, close that. Okay, now we're looking for a motion to move this along?
I'll move it.
Second. Mr. DePalma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mr. Agopian?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon?
Yes.
Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Missella?
Yes.
Mr. McGyser?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lowry?
Yes. Thank you all. Thank you. Good luck. Okay, we gotta...
Yeah, there's no one here. Yeah, just a...
Formality.
Yeah, formality-wise, we, motion to open to public for any general comments?
Open to public, no, seeing no hands. I need a motion to adjourn? Move it?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.